That's staff. Those are the costs for staff. So you can see our budget is primarily around staff costs. The budget for 2021, here's a slide that we like to show that's discretionary and non-discretionary. The majority of our budget is our fixed costs, non-discretionary costs, almost 92% of our budget. And then we have a list of discretionary items on the right. That those are the things that we can do that that we can work with on the budget, whereas the other stuff is pretty much set. Our property taxes, as you could see, eighty eight point eight three percent comes from the local taxpayers. And only around 11% comes from state and federal sources. I like, I do like to note that there are districts that have the opposite pie. Where around 90% comes from other sources and 10% comes from the local government. And then you have districts that have are all in the middle, 50 50. You know, some districts even closer to us might be more like an 80 20 split. And then there are some that are a little lower than ours. It might be like 90 10, but ours is definitely on the lower. So here's our budget categories. This is basically the way we doing our budget presentation for years. And these are the categories in each one of the each one of the budget categories. You can see instruction, which means like instruction, special ed, basic skills, those things in the beginning are all teacher and staff salaries, administration, health, guidance, maintenance and transportation. And then employee benefits is a is a large, a large chunk of our of our fund of our budget as well. These are items in the budget for technology, there are some new or replacement items. This includes, our budget does include an increase for technology staff at the River View Annex. It includes replacements iPads. Our disaster recovery system at Valley View, which is the network for the district. And also intercom system at Valley View. FM system replacements, projector replacements, replacing our our phones. Desktops and office, desktops in the offices and labs and some other equipment repairs contingencies. Our security, but this budget does have additional funds in there for security. There's $52,000 in additional funds for security. The the top one, 42,000 is additional class three officer. That is for the River View Annex. That would make it that we have four classic officers in our budget, one at each school, one at each school building. And we do have money in the budget this year for security for the E S Y program. Last year we did have the E S Y security, we just didn't have it in the budget. We we had to move some money around to make sure we could could handle that. And then we also have some replacement of cameras just wide. There's money in the budget that's coming from reserves for buildings and grounds. The top one exhaust fan replacement has been something we've been working on for several years now to try to get our systems in line. Our fans, all our exhaust fans repaired, replaced, anything that's supposed to be there and working properly. It's been a fairly long project, but we're getting toward the end. We have some exterior doors at Lakeview we have to replace. We are going to start, we are starting to work on some interior door refurbishment. Rather than replacing them, we were able to get a carpenter who is taking the doors off and refurbishing them. It's not only a cost savings, but it's actually better because the older doors are are better are a better product than the new ones. Our gym state, our gyms and stages throughout throughout the district will be screened and then re-coded. We have an electrical, two electric projects that at Lakeview we're working on. One of them is the main panel replacement. And that is something that we were told in a through our long range facilities plan with our architects and also we have some electrical panels in A Wing and the all purpose room at Lakeview that are beyond their useful life. And this budget also includes the athletic field at Valley View's refurbished renovations. And it's being done as a cost sharing with the township. A large portion of our budgets also of our budget that's coming from reserves is also for the River View Annex project. The top line is for the new technology that is required for the River View Annex. That includes security like cameras and 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 key fobs for the for the two doors. And then the River View Annex project includes electrical, plumbing, roof, masonry, paint, flooring, et cetera. We have money in the budget for signage to replace the St. Mary's signs with our River View signs. And also for furniture and setup that's going to be needed over there. And then we have money in the budget for contingency fees, legal and permits. This is money in the budget for curriculum and other personnel. We have in the current budget, we have $222,000 for textbooks. We have $34,000 for a part time nurse at River View Annex. A head teacher stipend at River View Annex. A full time counselor at River View Annex. Part time secretary at River View Annex. One and a half custodians that we would need to run the building at the Annex. We have some other needs throughout the district, including a new aid that's required for department, a part time ESL teacher. An additional elementary school teacher. And to continue our program with St. Clair's in the behavioral program. Then also continue the uncommon thread, which is our behaviorists. And the River View Annex lease is a new is a new thing in the budget. And then desks, classroom furniture throughout the district. Just replacement of old equipment. Here's our, this is our comparison group. It's something we've been doing for the last few years. This group, this list of districts here represents all of the districts that fit these categories. They have to be between Somerset and Bergen Counties. They have to be a K eight district. And they have to be between 1,000 and 3,000 students. And they have to also be in what what used to be called District Factor Group I, which is a a measure is a measure that the state put out several years ago to measure the demographics of a town, including its wealth. And there are several categories, J being the most wealthy, which would be like Mountain Lakes and Milburn. I is the next level, and you can see the list of districts we have on there. As you can see, our budgetary cost per pupil is eight out of 12, meaning there are several districts above us work on the bottom side of how much we spend per student. If you look in the source on the bottom left in red, that's where the information comes. Now here's the same comparison group and then taking a few parts, a few fields from our data to compare each other. The bottom is the category rank of how we do against the other districts. So our in our E L A, this is district wide now. Our E L A scores were 80 or 83.3%, which ended up being second out of the 12 districts. In math, 66.6%, which was seventh out of the out of the 12 districts. And then our growth percentages finished fourth and sixth, E L A and math. Our median income, which is a measure of wealth of the district, it was ninth out of out of the 12 districts and our percentage of the of the population over 25 years old with a college degree is 10th. And those two demographic, those two demographic pieces at the end are interesting because there is a direct correlation from wealth to to scores on SATs and other standardized testing. We like to point out that this is a, this is a, is a pretty good group of districts for us to go against. And we are definitely in the bottom third in the socioeconomic status, but we do, we do well in in our academics. And we do realize that math is an area that we need to work on and it's something that Dr. Cullis has put together. As a matter of fact, this this year we called our, the whole year was basically called Math Matters. Dr. Cullis had had several programs dedicated to improving our math scores and improving math awareness in the district. And that'll be something that Dr. Cullis will speak about when we do our presentation on test scores. Which is not tonight, another day. Here's our budget breakdown. So I highlighted this one section of that. I I want to make sure that that everybody, including the public, is aware that this budget is based on 1.7 million dollars coming from the state, which is a $258,000 increase. And the reason why I'm strongly highlighting this this year of all years is due to the COVID crisis. We, we don't have any information on whether or not we will be getting all 1.7 million. We have been giving some preliminary warnings that the 1.7 million may not be timely and may not be fulfilled to it, to it, to the highest level, to 1.7 million. So we are we are concerned with the fact that we may not get all of our state aid. And this is not just our district, but districts around the state and actually around the country too. So we are going to come up with some contingency plans on what what would happen if we did not get all of our state aid. But again, the most important thing in this slide right here in my mind is the yellow piece that says how much the aid we get. And the fact that the COVID crisis could hamper that. This is our estimated impact for the budget. So this budget includes a tax increase on the average home of $91 per year. And I I would like to make note that this is these, this is including the cost to bring a new building online. So we we did not go out to the public for any additional funds in a referendum or a second question. The, the, all the funds required to open up that sec, that fourth building, River View Annex, formerly known as St. Mary's Prep, included in this tax levy. So there is a $91 increase, but that that includes all the, all the money required, all the funds required to open up the fourth building. Some of the cost drivers. Our special ed costs always increased. Our mental health services has increased. These are things like we didn't have them in the budget prior to this. We have several, we have we have a good deal of funds in this budget for mental health services that we didn't have just a few years ago. The lease agreement for the River View Annex, security enhancements, including an additional class three officer and the extra hours for the S Y program. And then obviously our facility projects that we've been working on over the past few years. I like to end it with this D, did you know section? And did you know that the district completed many projects, including security bollards? Lakeview, electrical work rooms, et cetera, without the need for referendum. All of the money was paid for out of reserve funds. And it very important to note that our district paid off all this past referendum debt, meaning in our district, we have no debt service. The rep, the additions that were done in the early 2000s, late 1990s at Lakeview. And around the district have all been paid off and we have not taken on any additional debt for including opening up a building and doing all the maintenance projects we've done. The athletic field at Valley View will have a facelift and it's going to be done with the Denville Township. Township of Denville as well. This budget also includes behavioral service program at St. Clair's. The River View Annex, which will now house River View's fourth and fifth graders. It will continue to fund lunches for economically disadvantaged students. We have been doing that even during the COVID shutdown. We have been providing lunches for 76 students through M H R D, which is Morris Hills Regional. And River View and Lakeview are both named national schools of character. River View, Lakeview and Valley were all named future ready schools by the New Jersey Department of Education and N G I T. Very important to note as well, River View was nominated as a national blue ribbon school by the U S Department of Education in 2020. And this budget does contain an extra $258,000 in state aid, which was provided by S two, which is an amendment to the School Fund Reform Act of 2008. Basically what's happened with that is over the past few years, the state is now ramping up our aid to make up for the fact that we were shorted in millions of dollars over the last decade. So it's nice that we're getting the extra 258,000, but we've still been shorted by the state in our, in the aid that were required by millions of dollars over the last 10 years. We're just starting to get close to being made whole. We're still not there, but in the next, if they continue to do what they said we're going to do, we would, we would have the aid that we were required in the next few years. At the bottom, I have my email address and the business administrator's email address, Damaris Karowski. If any, anybody has a question after this and would like to ask at any time, that's fine. And now I'll turn it back over to our board president.
Thank you, Dr. Forte. How about the board? Do you have any questions?
Hey Laura, it's Mike.
Hey Mike.
Can you hear me? Okay. Hey, you know, a couple of quick comments. First of all, thanks to Mr. Forte, Damaris, Dr. Cullis, everybody and the finance committee who put a lot of work into the budget. I'll, I'll just say in general about the budget. I think I say every year, this is my sixth budget cycle, and I would say I say every year that you know, I think that the sustainability long term is always a concern. Considering that 85% of our budget is staff salaries and benefits, both of which go up greater than 2%. And we're within a 2% cap. Obviously, the the tax impact, I believe, if I remember correctly, was 2.25%. Right there in front of us actually still up. So yeah, so it's 2.25%. But obviously with that, we're, you know, always able to work with the budget and find a way to get within you know, be able to sustain those additions of increases in salary as well as benefit costs that are always going up. I am, I would say of every year I've gone through the budget, I'm, and I talked to Mr. Forte today about this, I'm extremely concerned. Not because of us as a district. In fact, I think that we are probably in the best fiscal stability that we've ever been since I've been on the board and and not that that's the only time, but I just think we're in a good place financially. We hear that from our auditor year in and year out. But there's a few things that are going on that kind of concern me all at the same time. Number one, as Mr. Forte said, we're taking on a new building that both takes in a lease cost as well as a lot of personnel costs that are required to run that building. And it's the right thing to do, in my opinion, but you know, it's happening at the same time that the state is having, you know, not just the state, but federally, obviously a lot of economic and financial concerns. The state has extended their fiscal year 20 by three months. And I personally think that there's a good chance in fiscal year 21 that the state gives us zero state aid because they're still going to be in their previous fiscal year. As far as I know, this has never happened, at least locally, and I don't know if it's happened, or at least in the near future, past, I should say, near past. But I don't think it's ever happened where they've extended the fiscal year and no one knows what was going to happen. The other part of it is just obviously economically, what are they going to do in fiscal year 21? So I think we could have a big impact on that 1.75 million dollars that's projected from the state, which is what they've told us initially. So that gives me a lot of concern. Not that I know what to do with it, unfortunately, because I think that as I talked to a few people today, it's it's unfortunate that we can't go back and redo anything after they give us our numbers. So as Mr. Forte alluded to, I mean, the good news is, is that 90% of our budget is controlled by us locally in Denville because of the tax burden. That that that's where the percentages are. But there's still 1.75 million dollars at risk from a state aid perspective that I'm concerned about. And and I say all that with knowing that there's not a tremendous amount that we can do right now outside of prepare for the what if scenarios, which I know that the staff are already doing, and I know the board and the finance committee are also doing, but it's definitely a, it's it's definitely a concerning year. The one part that makes me feel, obviously, like I said, better is that I think financially from a reserve perspective, we're as good off as we've ever been. So hopefully that financial stability will help us get through this economic downturn and potential decrease that we may see in state aid. So. But thank you, Mr. Forte, for putting it all together. And I know Damaris and the entire finance committee, it's, it's been a interesting budget year this year, particularly being remote, but I appreciate all the work that's that's gone into it.
Well, can I like to go back to, that's the slide I have up too. Damaris, would you mind chiming in on this? One of the things that I didn't mention was that we do have the ability to raise the budget by another, an additional 140,000 approximate dollars, which would be considered bank capped going forward. And if Damaris wouldn't mind chiming in on what what that would do to the impact.
Sure. If the district were to take advantage of the health insurance bank cap that it was issued in the last two years in the amount of 141,669, the tax impact to the taxpayer will be 101 dollar in tax rate will be 2.47%. Again, that's if the board decides to increase the tax levy impact from what it is now to be approved tonight with an increase of 141,769 that we put on the side as bank cap that we can utilize next year, but it will expire.
It'll expire in three years. And and the other thing I'd like to just point out is that the banked cap means that it's money that we could use, we could raise the the budget by. But because we've decided not to do it, it's money that we could use over the next three years. And also the reason why we're even bringing it up at this late hour is due to the fact that we're not certain of that 1.7 million dollars from the state. But we could, we could balance that out a little bit, obviously, with 140,000 dollars in tax revenue. So that's where we're at with that. And I'm sure that's going to cause some questions and and some debate here.
This is James. I know that for the public's sake, this, this, this amount of money that we decided not to take last year is now up for question for this year. If we don't take it for this year, then we still have one more year left, right, Steve? That's the total of three years that you were referring to.
Is that right, Damaris?
The bank cap will expire within three years from the time of issue. It was issued last fiscal year 19, actually this fiscal year 1920. So it will expire on the 21 22 school year.
Okay. So and we're talking about next year's budget. Yeah. From my perspective, I do think that this is something that we should seriously consider adding back into our budget. If if the rest of the board agrees. I think based off of what I'm hearing, the risk of the state aid of of us not receiving the full state aid is really high. I believe there's two different board members that actually mentioned the 2008 financial crisis that we had. And there was a lot that we've learned from that crisis. Is there a lot of similarities? I guess the question I should ask. Are there a lot of similarities and are there lessons learned from that crisis that we could try to implement for this crisis?
Well, during the last crisis, Damaris, help me out here. I I believe what what they did was they took your excess surplus. So they they reduced your state aid by whatever you had in excess surplus.
That it, that is correct. This district that was, that had excess surplus and reserves were able to use those reserves and excess surplus. And instead of the aid, they would, they lost the state aid, but they were able to use excess surplus.
So that excess surplus, that excess surplus is really what you're referring to as the reserves, the capital reserve and maintenance reserves, and they were allowed you to use that for operating expenses?
Hold on on that, that capital and maintenance reserve. Damaris, are you, is that certain that you were allowed to use that? Or was it just surplus and excess surplus?
Only excess surplus that those are money that are allocated just to offset the budget. We, this year we are using 200,000 dollars of the excess surplus. Everything else we put into capital and maintenance reserve. We do not save a a big chunk of money for excess surplus.
So basically, if they did the same thing that they did the last time, they'd be able to reduce our budget, our state aid by 200,000.
Correct.
That's, that's what they do, the exact same thing they did last time. I'm just telling you what they did last. So I think to answer your question, James, is I don't think anybody has that answer of whether or not this is similar, because I don't think the I don't think that the economic downturn is really similar to the last one, even though the last one was bad. I don't think it's, I don't think it was to this level. So I don't, I don't know if we can, I don't know if there's a parallel, but I do know that we're in a pretty good position if they, so if they, if they do what they did last time, we're in a much better position than some districts that have a high amount of excess surplus.
Got it. Thank you.
Damaris, it's Laura. Can you tell us if we approve the budget as is currently? And then later on, we hear from the state how much aid, if any, were going to be cut? Can we then go back and utilize the bank cap that we're not currently using?
No. Once the budget is approved by the board and also by the county, the final approval, no, we cannot go back. And I'm not sure if you remember, I believe it was a couple of years ago. The state decided to cut state aid to some district and to give some to other district with the S two. We were lucky enough to receive additional funds. Other districts had to find the money within their budget. So no, we cannot reopen the budget.
Yeah, Laura, Damaris is answering that question with the rules that we have currently.
Yeah.
If if your question is, will the rules change? You know, I don't know, but I know with the rules we have now, you can't do it.
Okay. So I think that conservatively, we're talking about them taking that 200,000 that we have in surplus and then possibly at a minimum, the 258 additional funds that we are scheduled to receive, which is, just so everybody's aware, that's half a million dollars. And that's a conservative figure that we would need to cut our budget by with the current laws.
As of this now, Laura, we don't know how much state aid, if any, they will cut. It could be 250, it could be 1.7 million. We do not know that answer. I'm sorry.
I think what you're saying, though, Laura said like conservatively, that might be the cut. I mean, if you're, if you're applying what happened in 2008 to today, that would be the, that would be the rationale.
That will be exact, yes. And that will be a flat aid and no additional funds. So half a million dollars cut.
Laura, this is Dino. Do you mind if I chime in?
No, go for it, Dana.
So a couple of things coming into today, obviously, I'm leery, as I'm sure the rest of you are, of adding an extra burden to the local taxpayer. But listening to the governor today talk about, I think he used the word Armageddon, budget Armageddon. If the federal government doesn't come up with some assistance for New Jersey specifically. He specifically mentioned fearing about paying teachers and police and firemen. So that I think puts some color on it. The other thing is that we're not really going to get, I believe, any kind of clarity until at least May 20th or 22nd. The governor ordered a report from the state comptroller, which is going to give them give some idea about what the economic impact has been and what the impact on the budget's been. So if we're looking at waiting until May, and I think we'll all agree, this is a much more severe, at least in the near term, kind of impact to the economy than 2007, 2008 was. I I think conservatively, I mean, I think your numbers are, you know, maybe even optimistic because I think the economic impact here is going to be much more severe and, you know, in a much shorter period of time. So I kind of came to today thinking not to take the 143,000, but after kind of thinking about what the governor said and thinking about where we are, I'm open to it. You know, again, that's me personally.
Thank you, Dino. And I think that it's important for the public to realize that this is something that the board, I think we've all struggled with this, is whether to increase the tax burden on the residents of Denville. And what we're talking about for the average household right now would be 10, $10 a year. Is that right, Damaris?
That'll be approximately, yes.
So we're talking about increasing the average taxpayer $10 a year to
I'm so sorry. No, it will be $91 a year.
Right. And then if we change that and took the, we took the bank cap, then it would be 101, right?
That is correct.
So 91 to 101, we're, it's, we're talking about a difference of 10. Is that right?
That is true.
Okay. So what we're talking about, and just so, you know, kind of summarizing it for the public, is that we're talking about an average of $10 per household that would give the district that would give the district an extra almost $142,000, which is something that the board has not wanted to take. But I think given the, the current economic crisis that we're experiencing, I think it is something that I would also be open to, and I'd be interested to hear the rest of the board's feelings about.
Hey Laura, it's Mike. I'll chime in just on the 141, because I know I had some discussions about it too. And I had some very similar feelings as Dino about if we take it, we're burdening our taxpayers even more. And in the past, we've let bank cap expire. In, you know, and it's, it's quote unquote, money we could take, but we felt it was not right for the taxpayers. And if we don't need it, then we don't take it. I think we're at a point, and, and I agree with Dino and Laura. I think, you know, we can, we can sit here and come up with a lot of what ifs as to what's going to happen. I think conservatively, a quarter of our, our, our state aid at 1.75, so if you were to take a quarter of that, I think conservatively, $450,000 is gone. That's just my personal opinion, because I think the first quarter, we're not going to get paid, and the state's not going to go back and double up in the second quarter. Because they're working off their previous budget. There's no money in the budget for what's going to be our Q1, which is going to be their fifth quarter within fiscal year 20. So I think conservatively, we're losing that much. And I think when you're talking about those types of measures, you're talking about two things. You're talking about every $141,000 at this point saves one or one and a half staff positions. Because that's what we're talking about. When Mr. Forte presented the budget, there was 85% that was in staff and, and benefits, meaning HR cost, staff, human person costs. There's, there's not many places in the budget to cut 1.7 million dollars. So if, if we were to get a cut of 1.7 or even anything close to that, even at 25% of that, I don't see how we can come up with a way to not cut what is projected in staff. Let me just make that clear, right? Because that doesn't mean that we cut staff that are currently with us, although that's certainly not going to be off the table. But, you know, there, there's going to be a lot of discussions on what, what the possibilities are. But I look and say, if we can save as many staff members as possible, it's the best for the students and best for the budget and, or best for the district, in my opinion. So I am also on board with adding the 141 back in, where, like I said, it's only for this year, because in the past, I've been against adding that money back in. But this year, I think that with the, with the huge amount of cuts we could see from the state, it's, it's the only way to continue to try to save as many staff members as possible.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else?
I'd like to, I'd like to chime in if I may. I seem to recall in the finance committee meetings that we've had on the budget, there was concern about the amount that we could lose in state funding and still be able to open the annex. And I think if we're talking about what Mike just said, that number would be enough that we basically wouldn't be able to afford to open the, the annex. Am I correct about that?
Yeah, Mike, I mean, Dave, I think we're, we're pretty, that's pretty accurate. Like a, a loss of what we've been talking in, a half a million dollars range would, would require us to rethink opening the, the annex.
Okay, and that isn't going to be enough, the, the, what, what was the exact number? 141, 147,000?
141,000.
141,000, thank you, Damaris. That would not be enough, even if we lost the minimum that we're talking about, the 450, that would not be enough to allow us to open the annex, correct?
So going from 450 to 300, I think, you know, it would help, it would help where we could do some, some pre-buying of things this year with this year's budget to help offset some of the things next year. So I think the answer, the answer to your question is, I, I, I can't answer it right now the way you're asking it, but what I could do is say that, that 141,000 would help. It would help us still to be able to open the annex.
Okay, I'm wondering if it would be better to use that next year rather than this year, the, the 2122 budget. I'm, I'm trying to think further ahead if this turns out to be a long, drawn out, not a depression, but like, i- if it takes the state longer than we're anticipating to get back on its feet.
Hey, Dave, can I jump in with a comment on that? Because I, 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 I think you're, you're thinking a, a little bit of a route that I thought about today, too. Here's, here's my concern. We don't know what the cut could be. And if the cut, i- if we say it's greater than losing the ability to open the annex, which is certainly a possibility, it could also be additional cuts with our existing staff. And I think we all agree that if we were, if there was too much staff somewhere, we probably would have already cut it. So I, I, I look and say, it's, it's not going to close the entire gap. But at least, like I said, it's, it's one or two more, you know, one or one and a half more staff members with that 141. And if we could find a way to move some stuff into fiscal year 20 and, you know, we will, I talked to Steve about this today. I think we will see a little bit of savings here and there with some of the virtual learning, some of the either utilities or transportation gas costs that we're not incurring, we'll see a little bit. I think, I think this is, you know, one of those times where I look and say pennies matter. And, you know, e- even $141,000 could go a long way. So I, but I hear what you're, you're thinking. I, I also think, don't forget, if we take the 141 this year, we still have it next year. In other words, that, that just is already in the base budget moving forward. So, but I, I, I hear what you're saying, Dave. I, I, I think with, without knowing what the cut could be from the state aid, man, this is like a whole bunch of us trying to take a, we're, we're shooting darts here, trying to figure out what could be the cut. But I, I think it could be more significant than we think. And I don't know, I, I think every dollar counts to try to save staff members and do what's right for the students and the district.
If I might respond, so if, if it is, if the, if the lack of state aid turns out to be more than what we've been discussing, then we won't be able to open the annex at all, and we might even have to cut positions, correct? I mean, that's, I, I think that's, I think that's what we're, what we're looking at. I, I'm not trying to be a doomsayer, but I, I think it's something we need to be, to be contemplating. I am not against the idea of using it this year. Trying to determine if it makes more sense to use it this year or stick with this, this year and use the, but use it next year. But like you, but like you just said, I'm not entirely certain it would matter one way or the other.
If I can, if, if you don't mind, if I try, if I can chime in for a sec. The other thing I've been thinking about is, and we haven't really discussed in any detail, is if we do go back to school in the fall, obviously, well, we are hope, we all, we will. If there are extra costs or there are things that we're going to have to do possibly in terms of distancing, and possibly in terms of rearranging our transportation, reducing class sizes. I mean, we don't know what any of that might look like. There may be really significant costs that are going to come into play. That, again, I think this 140,000, I mean, could help, you know, ameliorate if, you know, if not totally deal with. I think it would put us in a better position. There are just so many unknown moving parts that my gut is telling me it's safer to take this money now and build it into the budget and then go forward from there. That's not a very scientific, you know, analysis, but that, that's, you know, kind of what I've come to today, kind of trying to balance the pros and cons.
Thanks, Dino. Dave, I think it's important, I, I don't think that you're being a doomsayer. I think that you're being realistic. And I think that none of us want to, certainly to do that, but if they cut 1.7 million dollars out of our budget, I don't see how we could not, not only not open the annex, as you're saying, but cut current staff, because we, we need to bridge the gap somehow. I think it's also important to know that, to note that if we take the, the 141 this year, it will be built into the budget next year. And if that ends up being surplus and, you know, we can utilize it that way, we can do buying for the 2021 budget or for the 2122 school year and utilize some of that surplus as we're trying to now for next fiscal year. Don, are you there? Can you answer us? Okay, we're still working on Sandy. I think he can hear us, but he can't speak. Did anybody else have anything about the budget? Okay, so then at this time, as I noted in the chat window, I don't know if the, everybody from the public can see the chat window, but if you go to the upper right-hand corner of your screen and click on chat, you'll see where there's the agenda there. And then I've also noted that the open public portion, first portion of the meeting is going to be now. So if you have any questions or comments for the board, just please type in your name and address for the record, and we will call on you. I'm just going to give everybody a minute to kind of figure out if they want to say anything and how to go about doing that.
Laura, Sandy.
Hey, Dr. Kellis.
I just wanted to say, I declare, or to add on, because we keep saying if we don't add, if we don't open the annex or, or that. So for the public, what that means is larger class sizes. So to put it in perspective for the, for the parent at home, that's what it really means for them. Is that not, if we have to not hire those additional teachers or if we don't open the annex, it just means, you know, the larger class sizes for our primary levels specifically. Just to make them aware, that's what that means.
My class size is three right now. It's pretty good here.
It will be larger than that, I promise.
I don't want to hire my teacher back, though, you know, for my three. I see Mrs. Susan Priari. You can, if you're able to, you can unmute yourself and, and speak directly to the board. But I see your typed question, what is the plan for the current eighth grade class? If you can talk to us, I'm hoping that you can elaborate a little more on that. I'm not sure exactly what you mean by what is the plan.
Hi, this is Susan. I, just as far as like graduation or, you know, what, what is the plan of, are they going to have a graduation? I know the class trip has been canceled. And if they're still, are they still planning on having the, the dance, the formal dance for the kids?
So the answer to the question is, we will do something. And a lot of it will depend upon what the governor does. Whereas of right now, the governor's closed all schools, and that would mean that we were, we wouldn't be permitted to do anything like that now. So depending on what he says, and if he loses the requirements, that might give us some other options. But we will do something.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I'm sorry, I'm sure that many parents have questions about what is going to happen, especially for those kids leaving and finishing their school, whether it be the elementary school or Valley View. And I know that it's something that the administration is, is working hard to put contingency plans in place. But like Steve said, it's hard to answer without kind of knowing what we will be allowed to do. Does anybody else from the public have a comment or question for the board? Okay, so we are going to move forward with...
We're going to close open session at 8...
Thank you.
18, thank you.
So we're closing public session for now. If we missed anybody, please type in the comments or the chat. We will have another public session later on toward the end of the meeting. So to go through old business, Mr. Kim, would you mind moving us through old business?
Sure, I'll be happy to.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Wagner, do you want to have any superintendent's comment?
Or, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I apologize. Dr. Forte, did you have anything else?
Sure, just a couple of things. First of all, our staff has been terrific. I just wanted to make sure everybody knows that. I think that people have been very, very supportive of the students and I think very flexible. Right now, Ms. Priari just brought it up too, the end of the year activities, these are things that we've been talking about as a team. But it really will depend on what Governor Murphy does, which he's going to have to let us know pretty soon, because the schools, according to his executive order, are closed until May 15. After that, if there's, if there's ways to do things, we will. We did have to cancel the field trips and the major, the main reason was we had a deadline to get back our, we had substantial funds already committed and sent to the, to the vendors in the $40,000 range. And if we didn't tell them by April 19th, we, we wouldn't get all of it back. So that was really the reason why we made that decision. But depending on what happens with the governor, we will make decisions about that. We have been talking about it. And that's, that's my comments for today. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Forte. Dr. Kellis, I didn't mean to cut you off as well.
No problem. I just wanted to thank everyone who participated in our distance learning survey. The initial results were very positive. However, we are going to take all of that data and the results and see what can we do to continue to improve the virtual program that we are offering. So we will start analyzing that data with our, in, through the board committee and with our administrative staff. So thank you for participating. One of the dates we do know about rescheduling is the fifth grade middle school transition, like the placement meeting, which was scheduled before, we canceled that. And now it will be done virtually, and that will be on May 20th. So the login information will be sent to all of the fifth grade families. And that's that initial one. The follow-up, which is the orientation that we do for the fifth grade parents, Mr. Corman and Mr. Inglesman, Englishman will be doing that on May 27. But again, those logins will all be sent home to the families. Our kindergarten registration still continues, even though it's online. And we currently have 172 registered, and that is a reduction in the number that we presented last month. And that is because we did have some, we thought some would be coming for kindergarten, but a few are going to stay back in pre-K. So we're at 172. And that's, this concludes this superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Kellis. Damaris, do you have any comments?
No comments for me, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Kim, if you wouldn't mind moving us through old business?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I motion that we approve the following resolutions under old business. Under A, we will be approving the treasurer of school monies for March 2020, as well as the board secretary report. Under B, the education reports of the student enrollment for March 2020, the health office, the report of health office of March 2020, and Hib case VV 1920-09, and the minutes for the work session exec, and executive session of March 9th, and the regular session of March 23rd.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Anybody have any comments or questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass? We won't know. Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Laura?
Yes, could we suggest that Mr. Cass sign off and then sign back in? That might help. I, I, I don't know.
You just did. That's good. That's a good point. I did, I did call him and text him, too.
He might be able to call instead of logging in. Thank you, Mr. Laura. Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Shall we wait for Mr. Cass or give him a few minutes?
Can, if we move forward with the meeting, Damaris, and then we are able to communicate with him again... um, and then we are able to communicate with him again, can we, um, get his votes for what we've already covered?
This never happened before, so I, I can't answer you. I don't know.
Mrs. Wagner, I just saw Mr. Cass log off the meeting. This is Cindy Castanza. Um, so he, um, he should be back and, you know, shortly, uh, because he just did log out. So if we give him a minute or two, he may be coming right back in.
Okay, um, so let's thank you, Cindy. Let's, um, give him a minute and then I see a comment, um, that I'm just going to read. Uh, Mrs. Jahari Fuentes says that she can't stay much longer, but she wanted to thank everyone for all that they are doing. So hopefully Mr. Cass will be back on. And I don't see him yet. Thank you for everybody that's listening in or watching for bearing with us during the technical difficulties. Did you say something?
Oh, sorry, no, I just want to ask a little shout out to Guy Fox.
Um, okay, I do not see Mr. Cass, so, um, I don't know how we're going to record this, but as far as his vote, but, um.
Can we, uh, let's just wait a minute. Let's see, hold on. Yeah, just a minute, just give me, I know this is, these are definitely difficult times. I think we have.
Somebody just joined.
Yeah.
That's Don.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Do you want to reread the question or are you ready to vote, Don?
Yeah, I heard the question. I'm having, uh, some transmission problems here. So you put me down as a yes.
I put you down as a yes. Thank you.
Thank you. And Don, before we move forward, did you want to, um, add to the conversation about the budget that we were having earlier?
No, I just kind of repeat what I said at the finance committee meeting and I've said it in prior years. Uh, this state has been in a very poor fiscal shape before we had COVID-19 hit us. And, um, when we discussed the budget and possibly ratcheting it back at the, uh, committee meeting, I, I pointed out you could have a budget freeze, uh, going forward for the next budget, you don't know. So, um, we have to add some things in to protect ourselves. If the budget has to be exactly the same, uh, that would be a, a good move. Uh, everything's unpredictable in the future, but you could have a budget freeze. Um, when Christie was in, you had the 2% cap, which was, uh, very difficult for a lot of school districts get used to, uh, having a cap on their expenditures. So, um, this is a critical year that we have a, you know, a fiscally responsible budget, but can, uh, put everything in there that we need to in, in case the budget is frozen, uh, next time around. And, um, you can guarantee that the state age probably going to be cut back because again, the state doesn't have any money to begin with. And this is, uh, you know, protecting the citizens and doing everything they have to do with treating the, uh, COVID-19 patients and, uh, doing the testing and the, uh, the contact surveys that need to be done. It's an astronomical, uh, amount of money. So, uh, good idea to, uh, put the extra money in.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Um, okay, Mr. Anderson, moving on to new business under personnel action to be taken.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, Mrs. Wagner, would you like me to move A and B since Katie's not here?
Yes, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, if there are no objections under new business, I'd like to move A, items one through six, and B, items one as a block.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Capello.
I would just, uh, like to congratulate and thank, uh, Mr. Forte and, or excuse me, Dr. Forte and Dr. Kulis on, um, on their miracles. Um, appreciate the work they've put into those. I don't want to get that lost amongst, uh, everything else we have going on. That was a tremendous amount of effort and appreciate, uh, what they've, uh, done. And speaking of budget, one of those is, uh, reduce cost of $10,000 per year. So, um, every, every dollar counts, like I said. So, thank you, uh, Dr. Kulis and Dr. Forte. Congrats.
Thank you.
This is James. Could I ask a question about the flexible instruction day plan?
Uh, sure, go ahead.
So is this plan, um, was this plan created in response to the survey? That was also as part of the folders or, um, the survey that was taken, uh, to get a pulse? And, um, is there significant changes? Is there a significant change to the, um, I guess, uh, preliminary flexible instruction day plan?
So there's not a lot of change. It was really basically what it is, is it represents what we're actually doing now. Because remember when we made the first one, we didn't really know what it was going to be like. And we also didn't know how long it was going to be. So the answer to your question is there's, there's very minimal change because I think the program that Dr. Kulis wrote was right on point. But we did make some changes to it to offer more, um, interactive, interactive programs, which that was part of the survey, but we actually did this before we had the survey data. So we, we, we kind of figured that's what was going to happen. Because remember when we did this, we didn't know how long it was going to be. We were told two weeks, so we just came up with a plan for two weeks. But then we realized as we went along, we needed to do more interactive, um, interactive lessons with the students.
Great, thank you.
Okay, if there are no other comments or questions, um, then if we could have a rule call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes to both.
Mr. Cass?
Yes to both.
Mr. Capello? Did we lose him?
It looks like we might have lost him for a minute. Uh, somebody just came by.
Sorry, I dropped. Uh, yes to both.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Yes for both.
Mr. Lur? Mrs. Wagner?
Yes to both. Okay, um, moving on to policy revisions. Uh, Mr. Capello, would you take us through that, please?
Certainly, uh, so tonight, uh, for policy revisions, we have, uh, several policies for first reading. Uh, we have ones for board officers, uh, victim, another one for victims of domestic sexual abuse, uh, health and physical education, administration of medication, supervision of construction, uh, school year, school day, school closing, and reporting of potentially missing or abused children.
Thank you, Mr. Capello.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments? This is for the first reading. Okay, seeing none, let's, rule call please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Uh, abstain.
Mrs. Wagner?
Um, as we move on to finance, Damaris, let me ask you a question. Um, do we need to read it first and then make an amendment? Should, um, the person making the motion feel they want to make an amendment?
You, you will be making a friendly amendment to the motion. Actually, no, you can read the act. If we are going, if you guys going to go with the 141, we can do it, uh, right from the beginning.
Okay, so before we ask, um, Mr. Kim to read through that, um, can you give him the new numbers then?
Absolutely.
And then, um, I think I'm just making that suggestion based on the conversation from the board a little bit earlier. It sounds like, um, everyone that spoke about it, uh, seemed to be for the majority in favor of that.
Mr. Kim, the change, are you, can you listen, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
The changes would be on the general fund amount. The new amount will be 36,044,831. Special revenue stays the same. On the, on the next line where it says be resolved that there should be raised for taxes, it should be 32,324,284. We also need to add the following line. Be resolved that the budget includes the use of bank cap in the amount of 141,769 for the purpose of necessary expenditures district-wide.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Damaris. Um, Mr. Kim, whenever you're ready, if you wouldn't mind moving us through finance.
I'll be happy to. Uh, I motion that we approve the following resolutions under finance. Number one, the checks as listed in the table of D1. Number two is the 2020-2021 school district budget. Be it resolved that the budget of the Denville Board of Education be approved by the Board of Education. This budget meets a requirement for providing the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, SLS, and consists of appropriations as follows. General fund of 36,44,831. Special revenue of 328,047 dollars totaling 36,372,878. How was that?
That's great.
Be it further resolved that there should be raised for taxes for general funds of 32,324,284 dollars for the ensuing school year of 2020 to 2021. Be it further resolved the, that the budget includes a use of 141,769 dollars, bank capped for the purpose of necessary expenditures district-wide. That is a, that is a paragraph that is not currently on the agenda for the public as well as the rest of the board. The remaining, the remainder is found on the agenda. Be it further resolved that the Denville Board of Ed includes in the 2020-2021 budget, the adjustment for enrollment of the amount of 390,558 dollars. The district intends to utilize this adjustment for the purpose of paying for out-of-district placements, supplies, and materials necessary for students. Be it further resolved that the budget includes the use of maintenance reserve withdrawal of 146,000 dollars to assist in funding, building, repairs, and equipment district-wide. These improvements and upgrades will be completed by the end of the fiscal year 2020 to 2021. Be it further resolved that the budget uses the use of capital reserve withdrawal of 1,348,562 dollars to assist with the middle school athletics field reconstruction project and to assist with the Riverview Annex Project leased building in order to comply with building code. These improvements and upgrades will be completed by the end of fiscal year 2020-2021. Whereas the Denville Board of Education recognizes school staff and board members will incur travel expenses related to and within the scope of their current responsibilities and for travel that promotes the delivery of instruction or furthers the efficient operation of the district. And whereas NJAC 6A:23B 1.1, et cetera, um, requires board members to receive approval for these expenses by the majority of the full voting membership of the board and staff members to receive prior approval of these expenses by the superintendent of schools and the majority of the full voting membership of the board. And whereas the Board of Education may establish for regular district business travel only an annual school year threshold of 150 dollars per event, where prior board approval shall not be required unless this event threshold for the staff member is exceeded during July 1 through June 30th. And whereas pursuant to New Jersey Assembly Code 6A, 23A-7.3, a Board of Education must establish a maximum dollar limit for travel expenditure as defined in the, in that, uh, reg, uh, legislation. Now further, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Denville approve to establish a maximum travel expenditure amount of 57,000 dollars for the 2020-2021 school year. The maximum travel expenditure amount for the school year is 57,000 dollars, of which 44,159 dollars has been spent and 12,841 dollars is encumbered to date. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education approve a maximum annual expenditure for professional services, uh, where the auditor is 31,650 dollars, attorney with 85,000, and the architect is 5,000. And finally, three through seven is a block, uh, where there's a donation of surgical masks, uh, the donation of five boxes, additional mask and gloves to St. Clair's, estimated cost of 483 dollars. The adoption of envisioned 2020 math program for K through five to be implemented in September. And purchase, um, texts and teacher guides at a cost of 145,375 dollars and 60 cents, reference D.A. And the exception, uh, acceptance of donation of 50 dollars from Howie and Judy Levine as a supplement gift cards, uh, for the winners of the Valley View Green Team photo contest. And finally, the acceptance of a grant from the municipal alliance for 3,000 dollars to pay for the program provided by Dr. Mark Singer in February 20th for the Boundaries, Respect, and Ethics Committee.
I'll second.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cass, and thank you, Mr. Kim, for taking us through all of that.
Just, I would like to just say something real quick about the couple donations. Normally donations are things that are coming in. Numbers three and four are donations that the, that the district made to, um, our EMTs and to St. Clair's with some PPE equipment that was needed. And we will, we are doing these resolutions to allow us to put the, put in for the funds from FEMA if that comes out.
Thank you, Dr. Forte. Does anybody have any comments, questions, discussion before we vote?
Hey, Laura, can I ask a question? It's Mike.
Yep.
Um, Steve, I, I know this is a small thing, but milk fund. Um, since we don't have students in school, are we able to not have to pay for milk? And not, Don will be happy if we don't.
Damaris, can you help me on that one?
Yes, Mike, we are paying for milk. Uh, we are paying for the lunches that includes a milk.
So that's just the, the free and reduced lunches? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, we are paying, um, Morris Hills Regional for the lunches that we are delivering. And those lunches include a milk with every lunch.
Okay, but the students that are not currently physically at school that are virtually at home and have paid for milk, we're not paying for those milks any longer.
That is correct.
Okay, got it. And then can I just add one more thing, Laura? Just, um, to the, uh, as, as Mr. Kim was kind of reading the budget, I think it's important to note one thing on here. There's a, a line item that was discussed in the budget for capital reserve withdrawal of over a million dollars to assist with the athletic field reconstruction and the Riverview Annex Project. And I think for the, for the benefit of the public, it's worthwhile to note that, um, those, that capital reserve is not money that would help us with the problem we were discussing earlier, which is the operational budget. In other words, we couldn't cut those projects out. Or, and one of them is, is already well along. But we couldn't stop the, for instance, the athletic, the, uh, Valley View Field Project. Um, if we were to stop it and not do it, two things would happen. Number one, we would probably lose the 300 some odd thousand dollars that are coming from, uh, generously coming from the township to support that project. So that will potentially be lost. And, and the second part is that if we saved, for instance, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that line item, and Mr. Forte, please keep me honest here, that's not money, obviously, that we could use for the operational gap that we potentially would have if the state does cut the state aid. So, Mr. Forte, can you just keep me honest on all that?
So as of now, with the current rules we have now, that's totally accurate, that we wouldn't be able to use our reserve funds to supplement the budget on recurring costs, like personnel.
And, and that's a good point, Dr. Forte, is that with the current rules we have now. But if, if the rules are changed and we could use reserve funds for operational, we still have, after this year, there is still projected of greater than 1.7 million dollars. So even if they change that rule, we would still have enough after this expenditure for the field and the Riverview Annex to still plug that gap if we so decided to.
Yes, we would. And we also, we're also paying for the entire field, so that money includes the money that we're going to get back. So, so that one point, what we just said is actually lower because we're going to get the money back. So, yes to your questions, and you know, obviously, we, I keep prefacing it with under the current rules. But it, it's not something you would want to do long-term either, right? We wouldn't want to spend, we wouldn't want to spend reserves on anything that's recurring, like for a long time, because eventually it's going to dry up. Demaris, would you mind hopping in on that? How much do we expect to have in reserves after this budget?
After this budget and without the withdraw, approximately three million dollars.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
And, and just to, just to add on to that real quick, good point, Mr. Forte, that, that, or Dr. Forte, that, that, you know, some of that money is coming back from the township. But also, it should be noted that that capital reserve account, as well as our other reserves, we've saved for years for these projects. So this wasn't a project that we just decided on this year. We continually save in those reserve accounts for field projects, or a roof project, or a larger capital project to be able to use it. I, I think of it like our savings account, like if you want to get a roof done at your house, you save money for a couple of years, and then you can pay for the roof that way. The other way other districts do it is to go to referendum and float debt to be able to do that. We, as a district, have generally decided to not do that if we don't have to. So just, just so everybody knows that that money has been, we've been saving for years for these projects, especially the field project that has been put off for quite a while. So I, I just wanted to note that I still support that project. I thought about it today and even had some conversations with a few of you, just to make sure I was thinking the right way. But I still think it's the right thing to do to continue with some of those projects despite some of the potential financial concerns we have moving into the next fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Does anybody else have any other comments, questions? Okay, I thought, Don, you were going to say something there for a second. The only thing that I would like to highlight is we keep alluding to, you know, the current law and board members have done a, we've reached out to a lot of the public about the Assembly Bill that went, and that the Assembly voted on, but it is not law right now. And we don't know when it is going to be going to the Senate. They did have one virtual vote since our last meeting, and it was not brought to the floor, and we don't know if it will be. So that's why we keep saying, under current law, there are amendments and a bill in the Assembly to change the current law. But until it goes through all the proper channels, we have the law that's happened. Okay, if there are no other comments, let's do a roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
No on number one, check number 1188 Milk Fund, yes on everything else.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and if I am keeping on track, that should move us to Operations, Transportation, Buildings, and Grounds. Cass?
Thank you. On Transportation, there's no report tonight. I will mention that on May 7, we have an ad hoc meeting to address the bus driver situation. And they want to be, that may be one of the few positive things that come out of this COVID-19 shutdown. We have a lot of unemployed people, and maybe our, a bus driver pool will take a turn upwards. Under Buildings and Grounds, we have four items to, to move tonight. Item 2.1 is to approve the submission of the renovations to the Riverview Annex to the New Jersey Department of Education for approval. Item 2.2, that the Board approve nickel artistics proposals for signage at the Riverview Annex at a cost of six thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. Item 2.3 is the Board approve change order number one with Murray paving concrete for the Riverview Annex main waterline valves in amount of three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty cents. Item 2.4 is to approve the Denville Township School District Grant Application for Alyssa's Law Compliance and School Security Grant.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kim. Thank you, Mr. Cass. Questions, comments?
Hey Laura, just wanted to make a comment on 2, 2.3, which is the change order for Murray paving for the plumbing work. I, I plan on voting no for that, and that's based upon, when we've, when I've reviewed the quote, there's, there's a significant portion that seems to be fees for general contractors. And I mean, just, it's about a 45% additional on top of what the cost of the project appears to be for profit to about three different areas in there, and it just seems, seems high to me. So I, it's not that I don't want, I want to make sure you know, it's not that I don't want that project done. I just think that the cost was, was, it was about 1,200 dollars in, in extra fees going to several different places, which I thought was, was extremely high.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Dr. Forte and I had spoken about this earlier today. Dr. Forte, can you shed some light on that?
Sure. It's, so, one of the things I was concerned with, I'd like to have the general contractor oversee this project. And their, their cost is a, a cost that's done in this bid process that we use for the Middle Six County Co-op. So there's a lot of things tied up in that. Now, some of the fees going to the general contractor were the two, the two $300 plus fees. So there's around 650 dollars, somewhere around there, going to the general contractor over to the project. One of my concerns was I'd like to try to keep the, the project running the way it is with, with the, with the contractors we have, but also to not have our people exposed to additional people and have to get, you know, other people to come in and use the quotes. But I think the most important thing is to understand that it's, the purchase would be done through the co-op, which is already a negotiated rate that we pay a service fee to join. And this is, that's the way they do it, and I understand everybody's concern. And I'm still recommending it.
Dr. Forte, did anybody else have any questions or comments about that item or any of the other items?
Laura, just to, just to add on to that, kind of my feeling was it's 1,500 dollars in parts, and the remainder of the 4,000 dollars is for a one-day project for two people. So I just thought that the cost was high for that. And I completely understand where Dr. Forte is coming from, and I would prefer to go through the GC. I just think that their price is astronomical compared to, you know, it's 20, I think it was 1,800 dollars in actually fees. I said 1,200, but I think there was an additional 600 for the plumber, too. So understand where you guys are coming from, just my personal opinion. I wouldn't, that was my personal home. I would not go with that bid, but that's just me.
Dr. Forte, if you could play devil's advocate for a minute, and just, let's say that we either put a pin in this, or we, or it gets voted down. What would another method be to have this plumbing issue resolved?
So we would probably have to go out and get some quotes from different plumbers, which is not a bad thing most of the time. It's just not a great thing at this time. So we would have, we'd have to have our person meet with them. It would be done outside the architect and the, and the general contractor, and we would hire another contractor to do it. You know, it would take a little time to get all that stuff done, but it's not that it's impossible to do. It's just that the contractor we have there has to function under certain rules, and those are the rules that they have. So, you know, it is possible that we'd find somebody to do it for less. That's, I'm not saying that's not possible.
Yeah.
Laura, if I, if I could chime in, I actually met Steve today over at Riverview to, to do a walkthrough. I just wanted to see the progress, and I actually saw this closet. There is a lot of plumbing work to do there. I do get that there's a lot of pipes that have to be cut out, resweated. I think from a labor point of view, it's not crazy. I know there's significant parts cost, too. These are three-inch valves. They're fairly complicated. I, like Mike, though, have a problem with the, with the additional fees that are being kind of layered on top. It's a change order, yes, but we also knew that there was going to need to be something done here. So this started off in the first version as we knew there was something, but we couldn't quite see what it was. So in my mind, it's not, I don't know if it's really truly a change order. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is I have the same concerns Mike does about the kind of the additional costs that are kind of being layered on top.
Yeah, you know what? You're right. It really isn't a change order. I, I wanted to be super transparent with everybody because of the issues we had with the costs for the Riverview Annex and all the changes that happened since the beginning. So it is in the contingency, so it's not something that, it's already something you guys approved, but I put it on for a second approval.
I'm sorry, my connection, I guess, was lagging because they wouldn't let me unmute. If we could just, I don't know, if you guys want to go ahead to a vote, or if you want to review the document together as a board before we do that? Do you think that would help, Mike and Dino?
I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with the document. I mean, my issue is just the 45% additional fees for oversight on the project. I mean, it's just, it just seems astronomical to me. It's, it's 2,700 dollars of actual work, and then 1,200 dollars of, you know, profit for both the plumber and the general contractor. So it just, to me, for one day work, paying 4,000 dollars, and only out of that 4,000 dollars, 1,500 dollars is actual parts? That seems really expensive for labor. And we've got plumbers that are probably looking for work right now. So I know it's maybe some work for our team, but I, I just, I, I can't, I can't in good faith feel like that's a good use of the taxpayer's money, in my opinion.
Well, and I-
Oh, I'm sorry, Laura, I didn't want to cut you off. I mean, I, I kind of have the same basic feeling. I mean, school projects are one of the only construction projects happening right now. So I kind of am in the same kind of thought as Mike is. I think we, I think we could find a plumber. Again, I don't want to put more work on our administrative team, but it, it, it's a pretty significant increase. So I think I'm, I think I'm falling into the same kind of line as Mike is.
All right, let's just pull that. It's, it's too much. Let's just pull it off, and then we'll figure it out.
So, Mr. Cass, are you okay amending your motion?
Yeah, and maybe we could just get a, you know, Steve Tambrio, a plumber right down the road from St. Mary's. His car, his truck seems to be parked in front of the house more often than usual when I walk by. Maybe he could just take a, come down and eyeball it and, and give you an idea. You know, having been in the irrigation business, especially when you deal with all plumbing like that, you know, you take a look at it, it, it looks like maybe it's a two-hour job, and the next thing you know, you're there five hours later, you know, still trying to put things back together and everything. So maybe he could just get, you know, eyeball and give you an idea what it would cost to, you know, it sounds pretty simple. By the water meter, you know, maybe you have to take the water meters out, put the valves in, and cut some copper and sweat, sweat the new valves in. But Dino was there. I haven't seen it. Probably, it sounds like it could be a very complicated setup with a lot of work that has to be done to retrofit the new valves in there.
I'll tell you honestly, Don, looking at it, it is. It's, it looks like a fairly complicated plumbing job. I'm not, I'm not disputing that or minimizing that. So I can, you know, I'm, I am somewhat conflicted on this. And I had told Steve that I, when I walked out of there, yeah, it seemed like a pretty complicated job. But looking at the costs again, it seems higher than I think it, it probably could be, should be.
Yeah, well, you know, we don't have to approve it tonight, right? We can wait till the next meeting. But hey, we got enough local plumbers in town, somebody could just do a drive-by, you know, go over there, throw a mask on, take a look at it, and that, you know, they could come up with a, a good ballpark to tell you for being overcharged with things. And I understand what they, with the add-on fees, as I always said, if you had a plumbing job done in your house, it would, it could be done cheaper than it is on a government job with all the requirements and paperwork and regulations that the contractors have to go through when they bid on a job and do a job.
So, start, let me just ask, Dr. Forte, if we, we pull this and, you know, we, we bring it to the next two weeks, do you anticipate this delaying the projects at all? I mean, I'm sure there's other work throughout the project that can be done while we put a pin in this issue.
The only, the only things that would cause a problem is if we don't, we're not going to approve it till May 11th now. And if they're, I don't know if they are, but if they were going to do plumbing before then, it won't have any valves to shut off, so they're going to have to shut off everything at the street. So obviously, you know, there, it could slow the project down, but, you know, we'll work it out.
Okay, so, Demaris, I forget, Mr. Cass made the motion, and who-
Mr. Kim seconded.
Mr. Kim, are you comfortable with the amendment?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments on the remaining three items? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
So now we are at Good of the Clause Committee Reports Correspondence Discussion Items. Anything that anybody has?
Hey Laura, just two quick things. Number one, for the Personnel and IMP Committee, I spoke to Dr. Forte earlier today, and I need to talk to Katie. But just as a heads up, we may add a second IMP and Personnel Meeting in May. Dr. Forte seemed to be on board with it, probably shorter meetings and then do two of them. Just because there's a lot going on with the survey results from virtual learning and just a lot of lessons learned, and, and if we're going to be in this lesson, this virtual learning for, for any longer or potentially to the end of the school year here, just what we, you know, get some report and also find out if there's anything that the Board can continue to provide resources for, to, so just one, one thing to note, we may add a second committee meeting. And then the only other thing was, I just wanted to say thank you to Steve, the Transportation Department and the Denville Police Department earlier today, and actually, again, on Wednesday, one of the students in town, kind of the, the mayor of the, of the Bus and Transportation Department. We did, Steve organized a, a drive-by for him earlier today, which was awesome to see. He was really excited to see all the bus drivers and the aides and everyone from a transportation standpoint. So appreciate Steve organizing that, and that's, I think those are the kind of things that make Denville so special. And I know it took some time out, but I know the student and the family were very appreciative.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mike. I, second, I know that the family was extremely appreciative, and you guys made a student very happy. very happy, so. Does anybody, anything else?
I'm sorry, I think I lagged out. Could you say again exactly what we did for the student?
Yeah.
Drivers and...
Yeah, so the student is somebody who often waves to the bus drivers and the kids on the bus as they drive by, and I kind of, it actually started off with, they're doing some stuff during the weekend for him, for some drive-by for some families, and I brought it to Steve's attention, and Steve organized to have all the buses that were doing the lunch drop-offs today and again on Wednesday, actually drive by the student's house, and he came out and waved to all the bus drivers and the transportation aides, and I was also able to coordinate with the police department and get them to escort the buses down. So just a quick kind of drive-by for a student made a, made a big difference, I could tell you, he was really, really excited, and the family was really thankful, so.
Thank you both for organizing that and recapping it for me.
Does anybody have anything else?
Yeah, Laura, real quickly, just to kind of tag off part what Mike had mentioned about IMP, some of that kind of came about from a discussion, especially about special education. I think myself personally, and maybe other board members, want to do a little bit of a deeper dive into what's happening in special education through the distance learning, in terms of accommodations, in terms of therapies, what's happening. So one of the conversations Mike and I had was possibility of bringing Grace into the committee meeting to understand a little better what's happening there. It's to get, you know, do a little bit of a deeper dive into specifically special education. So just to give some, some more time to make that happen. The other thing was thinking about Riverview Annex, thinking about the possibility of opening it, not opening it, thinking about what might happen in the fall in terms of distancing with students, smaller class sizes, you know, lunches, I mean, all of these things that may require accommodations or changes to the way we operate. One of the things I was going to suggest, maybe we look at, maybe we start an IMP, is we have the Riverview Annex, we have four extra classrooms upstairs that we're not currently thinking of using, do we want to consider possibly using them if we need even more space? I know it's counter to the conversations we had earlier in terms of budget, but in terms of space and need for rooms, I don't know, it may be something worth thinking about, and it was just my thought to maybe kind of have that conversation.
Thank you, Dino, I think that's a great conversation to have. Steve, what do you think that process entails?
To, you mean to open up the second floor?
Yeah.
I would have a real hard time recommending that, just to, just due to the, the extra cost. So, I mean, we could, we can have a talk about it, but the, we don't, we didn't even lease that part of the building, so we would have to pay more for that, and we also would have to do, you know, they're, they're in pretty good shape, Dino and I walked through there today, but they would still need the paint and, you know, the cleaning up that would have to get done. I know that it's possible to do it, you also have other issues, like there's no, there's no elevator, and we said we weren't going to use the upstairs, so I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, if, but I am opposed to the cost. Just the idea of adding, adding the additional cost, recurring, recurring costs is, is, you know, considering all the things we're talking about, is, I guess, a little scary.
Sure, and I don't think, and excuse me for speaking for you, Dino, I don't think that you or anyone want to incur extra costs, but if we do need extra space, it might be inevitable that we incur extra costs in, in the face of not being able to open if that is, if that becomes the situation. So at least it's something that we put in our back pocket to have as one of the options of additional space if we need it.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think you recapped my thought exactly. I mean, look, we, this is a black swan event, right? This is an event nobody foresaw. We don't know what September is going to look like, or the fall, or January. So, again, I'm definitely not in favor of raising additional costs in, in an economic downturn when the state might not be able to give us the money they're already committed to, but I'd like to have a plan or think about what's possible if we're really faced with, again, some other kind of unforeseen, unimaginable event today. So I just think it's worth having the conversation and maybe putting a little bit of pen to paper.
Well, thanks for bringing it up, Dino. I think that we're going to have to think about a lot of different contingencies until we hear for sure what is going to be required for us to open back up, and I know that the administration is constantly having those conversations and, and prepping for when we are able to open back up. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, so now, oh, and I didn't type in, in the comments in the chat again, so I apologize, but we are opening up at 9:09. We're going to open up the meeting to our second public comment portion, so if you have anything that you wanted to ask or comment on for the board, if you can type your name and address in the chat, or just unmute your mic and state your name and address for the record, and go ahead. We'll give you guys a minute in case anybody has anything they'd like to share.
Hi Laura, it's Cindy Costanza, manager for Denville Technology. I don't live in Denville, but I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Board of Education for all the funds that they've put into technology that allowed Denville to hit this thing on the Friday that we were told we weren't coming back, and set up pretty much the entire district to be able to do distance learning on, you know, the Tuesday or Wednesday that we started, and without the Chromebooks and the technology that was built all behind that and your support of those programs, distance learning would not have gone nearly as well as it did for Denville, as it did not for many other districts.
Well, thank you, Cindy, for saying that. I think the, the thanks really goes to you, certainly, and your staff, and the entire staff of being able to adjust and take this on so quickly and, and really so well with something that was unprecedented. So congratulations to you and the rest of the staff and teachers. I think even before we looked at the results of the survey, which were wonderful, and of course, there are areas to improve on, but I think that the staff has done a tremendous job, and of course, the administration, and that could not be possible without your guidance with technology, so thank you to you as well.
Thank you. It just, you know, the teachers, too, they had time before this happened to learn how to use those digital tools so that they could, too, and they took the time before and after to learn this. So again, thanks to you guys, and thanks to, you know, the entire community for the support. It, it's gone very well, and it's a great team to work with.
Thank you. Does anybody else from the public have any other comments, questions? Okay, I am not seeing anyone else, so I'm going to close the public comments section at 9:11.
I have 9:12, Laura.
9:12, okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Does anybody want to give me a motion?
Motion adjourned.
Can I, can I go back? No idea.
Give it to Don.
It was Don.
Okay, Don, and seconded?
I thought I seconded it. Now, give it to Lur.
I was trying to get my button quick tonight.
Mr. Cass and Mr. Lur, thank you, assuming it's adjourned. Or do we have to go?
That's it.
Yay.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Steve?
Yes.
I didn't mention that we don't have a need for executive, Demaris.
No, no executive.
No, I'm saying, we just didn't make it a public record that we had no need for executive.
We adjourned, it was implied it was no exec.
Okay, great, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.